I have the topic, and, um, oh, it's diet friendly, for sure. I have the topic, and then so we're actually, we're calling it the family topic. Yeah, keep some of your coffee and all right?
Good morning, everyone. We will call a meeting order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interests in regards to items this morning?
Uh, yes, I would say most of those were the 2017-22 for 804 population.
In light of the actions that are going on, I'm going to declare pecuniary in regards to item 14C in the minutes of June 12, 13. So move on to delegations, and we have Tracy Weir. Line up, Tracy, and you said that, oh, you're gonna go there?
Well, I'll try.
Yep, that's fine. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for your time today. My name is Tracy Weir, and we have a cottage on Myers Lake just out of my sphere. I'm speaking about how myself and other residents and cottage owners on the lake, and I am here with me today. As only have 10 minutes, we'll try to do as briefly as possible. We're here today to illustrate the magnitude of the noise problem on our lake, and how the current bylaw or no longer that for 11 years is not enough for our small lake. Myers Lake is a small butterfly-shaped lake with an influence that divides body water into three cottages very close together. The roadway trails that go around the entire lake are probably about 6 to 7 kilometers maximum. I'm just gonna show a couple of photos. This is a shot from our cottage. As you can see, from a cottage that's next to us, and it's about 800 feet maximum. It's actually still a little smaller. Uh, this is another shot of the bay that's close to our area where there's a couple of large rental properties. The cottages here are very close together, in some cases less than 700 feet, the frontage. This is a shot from going around to the other wing. It's in a shape like a spider fly, and when you get into this area here, it becomes very narrow as you approach the other wing. This is the side, um, this is actually the other wing. Again, a couple of other rental properties are here, so the frontage around these cottages are over 100 feet. This is another shot. And then this is a view going back towards our cottage. Uh, there's a very large resort-type cottage that's been built next to us, and again, it just gives you an idea of the narrowness of. Our neighbors used to rent their cottages to all these families with kids July and August, mostly two weeks and even one month terms. There was no support, but for the most part, it was tolerable. If the stereo was loud, you could shut it off, and it was typically for a relatively short period of time. Until now, only once did I have to go over and ask renters to turn down the stereo as it had become too much for too long. I had no idea what the bottom line was, I just asked, and they just sold out our tent. Now our neighbor has found a new income stream, which essentially has from renting to a large group of young cottagers on weekends. Actual cottages need to be overturned. Yelling, shouting, screaming to the outside every second were clearly audible from our property, and of course, a lasting stereo system that barely stops from running tonight, even as early as 9:30 a.m. After speaking with three guests, the bottom office of several incidents started to make. She suggested I try video recording the situation. I didn't, I didn't have time to listen up. Videos I have here were recorded on a Friday night after spending three hours in traffic, driving from, well, Tracy, but I want you to understand the magnitude of this situation we're facing. I don't know if the speaker system is doing adjusted, but, oh. Anyway, this is my property here at 200 feet frontage, and we're about 300 feet from the, from the floors. That was taken about 8:30 at night. Yeah, the videos aren't picking up. This is from the back of my, my cottage. The sound on my laptop is much stronger, I'm not sure why, it's not very likely to hear. Um, anyway, the music is, is clearly audible at our property. It's blasting, um, and it keeps going again louder and louder. This is 9:30 at night. This is from our staff, our silver room. That's the hoop playing in the background, obviously. And at 10:45, this is from the same point. So the point here is it just keeps getting louder, the fire keeps getting stronger, and it's impossible to get away from it, even inside the property with the windows closed. But at 10:45, I called the police. Unfortunately, I do not have 11 p.m. video, because at approximately 5:00 to 11:00, the place went silent. I presume that the landlords actually phoned the tenants and told them, "My mind is to shut it down before 11:00, because there's no way in the state that they've been in that they would remember to do that." Saturday, the only reason we got from the noise was the accident, raining all day, which kept the tenants inside. But at 12:30 at night, they decided to go out to the lake, and again, start blasting the stereo, and they were constantly screaming. This is what we've been saying pretty much every weekend in May and June.
This is 12:00 Thursday at night.
He's gonna wait for the screaming. Again, this is from our, our front door. We had guests that weekend, and they can hear it from the bedroom. The music is blasting as well. Um, although we've done everything we can to mitigate this situation, including multiple contacts to the owner, you know, we're telephoned, called, we only get indifference. Called the township, run some council, with one comment to my husband. He has been renting, Richard has been renting this cottage for years. He already knows the bylaw and knows he doesn't have to control the tenants before 11:00 p.m. He simply didn't make sure last week they do, or how he'd impact himself. But Will and I are not alone. As you well know now, given a delusional email, it's only called to receive. Cottages like Lisa's shop, small kitchens near parents' next door, shouldn't have to be subjected to blasting music and profanity they can hear from across the lake. Hannah of Jordan, 25 years on the lake, shouldn't have to leave their home because they can't stand the college dorm they find themselves living in as they're now sandwiched between two full-time rental properties. Alex Campbell, 52 years on Myers Lake, retired teacher now living next to a rental property catering to a large group of cottagers. She shouldn't be stuck inside or relegated to a garden by the will because she can't take the onslaught of noise and scattered speakers placed at the lake. Afraid to ask the people to turn it down and knowing the owner will do nothing. Nor should never neighbor of Alex's, Olaf Kuzo, facing the same barrage of noise, have to accept from the owner's bad work and scarring. It is what it is, I have a war edition to pay. Michael Veroni, force of odor cottages confront large groups of young men, blasting the stereo, is tearing their heads off, only to have a yelling match in the street with a gay who does not know. They won't turn down the stereo, so they have no choice, I told them I should call the O P T and hope there's no retaliation against him and his wife to rent us. Nor should any of us, after asking people to turn their music down to reasonable level and stop swearing or screaming at each other, have to listen to their complaints, these are comments such as, "Who the hell do they think they are?", or worse, "I'd like to bash your head in." How among all of us face these issues? The groups of renters are getting bigger, louder, and have a sense of entitlement because they hate, so their rights are owned by cottage owners and taxpayers. The rental owners, the rental owners have been contacted several times by us and are indifferent. They know the bylaw would give 11 p.m. serving, and don't feel any need to address except the noise issue for them. Landlords are tainting us as cottage owners, which is ironic, given that township didn't even know there was an issue on our lake. Clearly, we are tolerant people who don't expect bed slums 24/7, and we prefer not to call you or the O P T. There are reasons why we have townships, and even these newest counties have revised the bylaw and have prohibited this type of noise 24 hours, including Prairie Town, Raven and Sprays, which is due to the, um, the color. Sable, Mininut, Torso, even the city of Toronto, and various. Higher population density, bigger stereo systems, Airbnb, larger cottages having more people, and more cottages blocking people who can only find that since they're renting. We are reasonable people and understand that the township of Jordan Bay is large and due to our history to serve. We understand that changing the bylaw would require additional resources to enforce a 24-hour prohibition of class of township. However, we are dealing with an unreasonable, unsafe situation on our lake, and strongly feel we cannot resolve this problem without a 24-hour restriction. It will only get worse, escalating to some serious conflict in the near future. We respectfully ask townspeople to support a 24-noise prohibition for Myers Lake. Number one, it would be more sensitive. It puts more on its front cottage landlords to ensure they are being selective with whoever is using the cottage, and it creates situations that will get shut down earlier in the day. The landlord won't have to make 11 p.m. to get under the tenant. It would give your bylaw offices more authority to team up with key offenders, who are clearly working with current bylaws to their advantage. It will increase security for all. As I said to Paul Sreen, and this is no longer just amusement and increasing in honor of ability to enjoy our property, this is a safety issue. 11 p.m. late to deal with a group of strangers up in drinking all day. The longer one has to wait, take action, whether it's themselves, the bylaw officer, or the police, and their dangers to death. If township can't do anything to shut down the cottage because it gets out of control, the O P T typically won't come before 11 p.m. That leaves us all here to either pack up and go home, sit inside with windows shut, or approach and confront wrong people we don't know. Number four, you'll keep our lake attracted to people who've been encouraging purchase of cottages quite lately, and for people who want to live here full-time or most of the year, putting their money into local economy. Personally, Will and I love all of Mississauga, and as much as I love my cottage and would never want to sell, we would not defy your community to face the situation with no recourse from the authorities. Likewise, other owners will end up abandoning their cottages. Myers Lake is only 30 minutes away from the township office. Easy access to office 400 with no miles to go to, and most of the rentals are seasonal. We believe this is manageable to enforce, and when 10% necessary, to stop the escalation of the noise problem in safe locations. We all have the right to reasonable enjoyment of property. Please give us a bit of hope from the township bylaw. An environment for us free from unusual, unnecessary, or excessive noise, which degrades the quality and tranquility of life or causes nuisance or destruction 24 hours a day, not just 11 p.m. to 7 a.m. Put the responsibility back on the owners to respect other cottage owners throughout the day. Force them to better screen their renters and stop taking their cottages by bars or subnets, risking our security, while they enjoy keeping quiet elsewhere. Give us the power to shut down the excessive noise before 11 p.m. We can enjoy our cottage again and be free of late-night confrontation, compensation. Consider a higher levy against new key offenders to help drive much needed change, and cover any additional enforcement costs to the township. After all, the cottage, rental, landlords are getting paid. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Uh, we hope that you will please support us, and if you're willing to help us. And I've got the listening, should I begin off?
If, if you'd like, Tracy.
Okay, uh, so Tracy Weir, Lilith Wagner, Pam of Jordan, Scott Bell, and Lisa Cartagena, Asco and Alah Cartagena, Abel and Ava Cartarina, me and Marina Sten, Nana, Leo Lego, Jorge Castira. He is the president of our Small Roads Association. Michael and Joanna Veroni, Alex Campbell, Alex and Betty Dammey, Olaf Kuzo, Linda Dine, and the people I don't feel for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any chance you could leave a copy of your presentation?
Yes, I could, yeah.
That'd be perfect. And, uh, I suspect we'll be having a discussion on this at some point through the meeting. I can't, uh, I can give you a guess, but on what time at this point, so. Okay, so we have the district of Mississauga here. A few representatives. Summer, you've got a presentation, you're gonna tell us all about the district official plan. There is a button underneath there that has to be turned on, otherwise you gotta pull on the call card.
Thank you for your worship, and good morning, council, guests, and staff, and staff particularly. Uh, thank you for facilitating our present today and the delegation of the Mississauga official plan. Uh, as many of you are aware, the district of Mississauga is currently reviewing its official plan, and that is the land document that manages growth and change across our district for the next 20 years. We were requested by our planning and economic development committee to visit each area municipality provider and update on the Mississauga official plan review, and give council a flavor for some of the proposed changes that are being adjusted by our consultants. So you will be seeing reports from your own staff, which will really mirror in on the interest that we're taking with township. Uh, so this was really intended as an introductory presentation, happy to take some early feedback as well, should you have them. But before I begin with the presentation, I just did wanna recognize that we have here with us today Chair Johnson, let me step out for a moment, and major commissioner Scott Weir. Uh, very quickly, this is the proposed work plan, uh, set by our planning committee. It's an ambitious 18-month, uh, timeframe. We have so far completed background papers, we've done preliminary directions, which has quite a bit of feedback from the area municipalities, and the township of Jordan Bay as well. Um, and now we have before us the first draft of our official plan. So we're entering stage four, where we're consulting with the public, our result communities, and other stakeholders to really understand as wide a ride as we can on perspective on the draft policy. Once the conversation is complete, the plan is to make any revisions necessary as a result of the feedback that we did receive, and we anticipate the plan moving forward with options later this year. After that, the timing becomes a bit more uncertain, because the plan does get shipped off to the province, who is the approval authority, and then of course, there's always the possibility of a bill. So in preparing the draft, thanks so much, Jamie. In preparing the draft policies, uh, we did have some clear direction from our planning committee, and that was to establish a broad, upper-tiered policy framework, which really does emphasize coordination and cooperation between the two levels of municipal government. And really, um, focuses in on matters that are cross-yurisational and district in nature. In addition, we'd like to provide strategic direction, which is required to realize common thread or common goals across all six area municipalities, and to implement a provincial policy statement in a native municipal approach that recognizes the unique opportunities and challenges that we face with the district, and provides results that are outcome-oriented and evidence-based. Uh, the plan is also intended to recognize the diversity that exists across the six area municipalities that make up the district, build on the strengths of the district, have a toll each of its component parts, and quite importantly, um, recognize the importance of aligning these responsibilities throughout the area municipalities, and reduce any perceived duplication between the district and area municipal planning. So the next four slides are intended to draw your attention to what we're calling the big ticket item for the major policy changes proposed as part of the draft official plan, and we'll start with growth management and housing. So the majority of these policy changes that do originate from the Mississauga growth strategy of 2009 and 2013, which saw a heavy involvement from the towns and townships in the creation of those recommendations. So very quickly, uh, the policies are intended to provide more clarity on where growth should be directed with a real hierarchy of locations, starting from where municipal services are available to other small communities, and then rural waterfront areas. The policies do suggest the majority of permanent growth should be directed to urban centers, and there are corresponding district-wide and individual area municipal targets for permanent growth in those areas. We've included targets for intensification at a district scale, and we suggested that each area municipality come up with their own intensification strategy that makes sense for their contest. We've also included minimum targets for density, uh, for residential growth in greenfield areas within our survey urban centers, being that here in Port Seven in this case, and these types of targets would apply between your built-up area and your, your boundary. Housing mixed targets for urban centers are also provided. There's still a decided majority, single-family, residential dwellings expected across the district, but we're moving towards a broader range of housing types that really respond to the needs of our population and our demographics. And lastly, there's a renewed focus on attainable and affordable housing across the district. In terms of servicing, while the basic water and sewer service policies remain essentially the same as our existing official plan, there are a few notable changes which we'll save you through. Uh, for larger proposals that come forward, particularly those that are multiple property in nature, a comprehensive plan will be required upfront that address how the development is intended to build out, the phasing, the orderly progression of infrastructure, a detailed managed plan, a clear understanding of roads, access, and emergency access, location of public land, and how the development will protect natural heritage features. The policy also requires that in urban centers, municipal water and sewer services are phased, and represent and help logical expansion of our existing services are with a priority, essentially played on development that makes good use of the existing services that we've already adapted in before expansion of such a service existence is contemplated. For the first time, we'll be including urban service schedules in our official plan, which show clearly where whole services are available, where single or partial services are available, and where we're expecting services to move in the future within our urban centers. So really, most of these changes summarized in the presentation are intended to make a stronger link between land, land and infrastructure, and asset management with an eye towards fitful responsibility. Perhaps one of the more controversial areas of discussion thus far in the process has been policy changes related to rural development. The proposed changes outline in this policy set implement the recommendations of the 2013 Resorts and Tourism Study that was undertaken by the district. The changes include a new and clearer definition of what a resort used to be, and a recognition that every resort is different. There's really no one-size-fits-all policy set that can really be proactive for all resort types, and the key here being flexibility. Commercial criteria, especially the availability and turnover of resort units, is articulated in the policy with a knowledge that tourism, as well as the second home industry, is the backbone of our autonomy. Here's where we get to the biggest change. The draft policies suggest that it would be appropriate for up to 50% of our resort development outside of an urban center, so not on modern sewer services, to be something other than a commercial use. And really, people are focusing on the potential for those to be 50% residential in nature. While the change would support the growing of the resort industry, the policies are intended to strike a balance between the needs of other stakeholders and taxpayers. More flexibility is also being suggested for how resort proponents provide financial guarantees if they're looking to take advantage of private communal services, which there is that liability rest to the district in Mississauga. And also downzoning price theory, that's when a resort moves from a commercial use to a residential use. Um, that's more stratified, so to provide some flexibility to smaller resorts. Um, perhaps the resort is doing investment, and the owner would like to retire, and that's their source of retirement income, for example. The last major change here, well, the Mississauga official plan has a strong environmental protection policy. They really do require some modernization. They haven't been updated since the nineties to align the provincial policies and legislative changes. This section is likely quite a bit of interest to the township of Jordan Bay that has a lot of specific environmental features that are not covered in more detail in the, in the district plan. So the plan covers wetlands and coastal wetlands. So the township of Jordan Bay is the only one of our major counties that has coastal wetlands in danger and a threat to be seen, which is, um, is often a topic of discussion here. Significant wildlife habitat, fish habitat, lake trout lakes, which there are none in this township, and pro parish sites and areas. So although the draft Mississauga official plan is the same length as the existing Mississauga official plan, a number of new sections were added to address provincial policy, as well as the district vision, which was incorporated into the plan in 2013. So just a couple of highlights from this list, we've got policies addressing healthy communities, and how people can live healthier, and how land use planning can contribute to the health of our population. We have policies that look at climate change mitigation and adaptation, and the word climate change don't occur in our existing plan, so that's a big step forward. We've heard from our Aboriginal supporters and communities that our, our biological resource policy needed to be more detailed, so we've included that detail there. And we've also included policies as required by the province of Ontario to address wildland and fire hazards. So likewise, we did delete a number of sections as well, and this is in the effort to make the plan remain broad and strategic, ensure consistency with the provincial policy statements. And many of these areas, like the outside, are well-covered in the area municipal official plan, so there's no need to duplicate these in the district official plan. And some of these are actually outside the jurisdiction of the district's or land use plan in general. So we have policies that we can enforce in any way. So continuing with a theme of broad and strategic, these sections, um, that's the outside here, we cut the detail down, waste management and natural hazards, being two of those. And the area municipal plan already contains quite a bit of detail on how development should happen within urban centers and communities, as well as general development policies, so the details are removed from those sections as well. We do have a few areas where we included more detail, and those are mainly to ensure that the policy set represents a native Mississauga approach. So we did change the introduction section of the plan, and that was a better job at really setting the scene of Mississauga kind of knuckle between the fast-growing southern Ontario, um, GTA area, which really does have quite a bit of an impact on how we develop in Mississauga, but we're knuckle between there and northern Ontario, and have a lot more in common with northern Ontario, which is in common with northern Ontario, which involves our landscape in terms of social issues and economic development challenges, so that's a better job setting that stage. Economic development policies are also tailored to reflect the employment patterns within the district of Muskoka. They're very different from southern Ontario, we're based on tourism and second home population, and we don't generally have a big nose of factories and industrial warehousing type of society in southern Ontario. And as noted earlier, the natural heritage section was modernized, and we added a completely new section of water resources, which acknowledges that power of water is a key district interest which impacts both our environment and our economy, which are inextricably linked in our area. We also heard loud and clear through this process, "Don't reinvent the wheel, don't throw out what's working, don't throw out the basis of that water." Essentially, we did make an effort to keep those policies and update ones that have served us well over the past couple of decades. So any plan-specific policies were brought forth, no changes. The vision and guiding principle is kept the same, it was approved in 2013 after two years of consultation, and only minor ones were down to our rural and waterfront policies, transportation, agriculture, and so on. So finally, one of the key tenets of Muskoka official plan review is to recognize the responsibility of the land use planning at the area municipal level, and to encourage and improve cooperation between municipal governments and reduce perceived duplication. So to that end of this slide, and I recognize that no human could possibly read it, but what it's intended to show you is that wherever we possibly could, we left the detail out of the district plan, and we suggested that that would be dealt with in the area municipal plan. So there's no difference of areas that used to be well-part in the district plan, now we've provided a general framework, and each municipal area of the municipalities is intended to take that framework and tailor it to their individual context. So to end off this morning's presentation, here on the slide is a summary of the consultation strategy that's been rolled out over the summer. The goal of our strategy is to meet or exceed the requirements in the planning act, to engage both seasonal and permanent residents, plus targeted stakeholders. We do have opportunities for folks to come during the day, during the evening, on the weekends, as well we have an electronic comment form, and people can't physically be at any of the meetings, and we're happy to take any sort of bridge to the mission by email or by letter at any time in the process. We'd also like to engage with our area municipalities and the province, and seek a broader range response to our policies, policies as we possibly can. So in addition to meeting with each area municipal council this weekend, next, we have a consultation strategy that involves newspaper ads, social media, mail circulation, targeted Aboriginal circulation, contacting stakeholders by email, updating our website, and thank you very much to Jeff Cusack, he's been also updating yours as we go with the similar material, and a link from our second study to this project in case there's similar areas of interest for those that follow the second study. So area municipal staff, which will be notified of each of these opportunities, and certainly we're happy to receive comments from the township, ideally before the public meeting in August, but really anytime through the process would be great. And then our next step, which we touched on earlier, the public consultation will run throughout the summer, culminating at the end of August for the public meeting. In early fall, we hope to let any comments that we have in the gap receive and work on revisions to the policy set, and we're hoping that late in the year, we'll be in a position where we can recommend a document for adoption, not until we reach the council. The package gets sent off to the province, and in our experience, that provincial review along with subsequent appeals to be on area municipal boards could last up to a year, so we're still quite a ways out to see new policies in place. So your worship and council, that concludes our presentation. Thank you for having us today. We'd be pleased to respond to any questions about my notepad, to take some initial feedback if you have any. If you'd like to mull it over, contact information is on the slide, and we'll let the town roll staff be back before you highlight on the area of interest to contact.
Thank you, Summer. I see hands up for Councilor Edwards.
Here's the basic issue, those, most of us on the coast do not believe we're in Muskoka, we're in George Bay, and there has been a push over a number of years to get those of us on coastal George Bay to join the archipelago, and I think it's important that that get into this document. It's a provincial issue. We got close in one of the previous provincial groups that were in power, but what do we need to do to justify that and to make everybody aware that we do not consider ourselves Muskoka?
Your worship, it might be a challenge to include something of that nature in an official plan. As an interim step, perhaps what I would suggest is that there be some policies in the Muskoka official plan recognizing the difference of course coastal George Bay to the rest of Muskoka, but in terms of realigning boundaries and changes of that nature, I'm not sure that an official plan at this point is the appropriate document to move forward. The official plan would reflect the boundaries in position today. That being said, certainly loads up comments from this council, and it's appropriate from a provincial perspective, we can include something of that nature.
Thank you for your presentation, Summer. This is maybe a little bit outside of the official plan focus, but nevertheless, I want to ask a question, is it an issue for township? And I suspect it's an issue for the district of Muskoka, and as I say, it may not fall under your purview and this examination, but it's not a particularly exciting subject, but it's the treatment of septic. And I, you know, I hear and saw things here about storage water projection, water resources, et cetera, and yet I understand when we have septic system pumpouts and holding tank pumpouts, that the septic is trucked some distance, and I think a lot of it is trucked outside of the district of Muskoka, which is concerning to me, and it's also very expensive for those that are dealing with this. So I'd like to know if there's any plan in the district of Muskoka to deal with this particular issue. And as I said, I'm not sure that it falls under your purview, but it is an economic consideration, and I would guess, and maybe you can answer this question, but I would guess there are probably more septic systems and houses on septic systems than there are on regular town treatment, if that's the case, which I'm pretty sure is, then we should be thinking about dealing with that, so I would hope you can answer that question.
I'll agree with you, your worship. Certainly an important question, and as you articulated quite well, there are many more households in fiscal containment or permanent on-site that individual systems than there are in our urban centers. From a land use perspective, we certainly included policies that require new law creation and septic systems to ensure that there is capacity within the district of Muskoka to handle that septic. In the sections of our public works department, and you articulated as well, it's not capacity that's the real issue. We understand that there's an economic issue, a cost issue. I was lucky enough to sit in on a meeting that happened with our public works committee last cycle, and the septic pollers did come and give a presentation outlining the situation as you described it, that was quite sensitive, and that they passed along the cost to the consumer, and that's a big incentive for folks to pay proper care of the system, essentially I believe is what they're saying. So the issue's been brought forward to the district, it's on the radar. Our director of water and wastewater is looking into working with the septic pollers and looking for a solution to this situation. But in terms of a land use plan, I think you're right, in that source water protection policy should be strong, as well as ensuring that that capacity is there to deal with the sewage, and knowing that there's another program or another approach to the economic side of it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Summer. Thank you, Scott, for coming. Thank you, Donna, for coming.
Thank you.
I understand you got really hit harder with the storm on the weekend up your way. We can see it from our place. No wind, no rain, no nothing. It's up to tiger weather. We do have a couple of public meetings, but they're scheduled for 10 o'clock. So let's move on to consent agenda, get a little bit of business done, and we might get out of here a little bit early. We do have a resolution here, it's moved by Councilor Reinko, seconded by Councilor Douglas. Be resolved if council adopts the consent agenda of July 10, 2017, as amended and given authorization for all actions within to be taken. And the First Amendment is remove Cow Resolution 32-2017 and place under new business, and that particular resolution is the noise bylaw resolution from last meeting. Any other suggestions for amendment, Councilor Reinko?
I was just wondering under the legal fees for 2017, I just had a question that only needs to be pulled, but the question was, I could see in there the cost for the mitigation we should have assessed. So that's for after this particular time, or?
She's not her lawyer.
She's not her lawyer, then?
She's paid under the law.
Oh, okay. Okay, so that should go up someplace else?
In a different county.
Oh, no, we'll find out eventually that that box is out.
Yep. You can find it out through the meeting. Can I sort it out?
Okay, from the council meeting minutes, one, I, one, eight, where Declaration of New Year of Interest, Council of Ochec, that became the main board grade, which is every light and fourteen. I would like to clarify from a spot by my hotel, that we have a policy for new year interest, we need fair product interest due to the travel.
Is there no?
I don't care.
There's no? Hello? Council Douglas?
Can I have my name up?
Mr. Ochec? In the book, when I wrote it, to declare, I did declare a constant interest model. Okay. Anyone else? Something that I have noted, on page 37, prior to the two counselors to my immediate left and right running the meeting, it should say that if I was left at the table, and we were not present for that discussion, and after that discussion, it should also note that we returned to the table. I didn't see that in there myself. Is anyone reading the minutes and wondering why all of a sudden there was a number of the secondary, and that was it? Anyone else see anything? Was it? Make some notes on there? Have you taken them down in there? I get scared to death now because we don't put things in resolution form. So I would prefer those minutes to get attached to this resolution. So just a notation, the minutes will be republished to reflect those few changes. So in addition to removing the noise resolution, we've noted in the minutes of June 13, council be corrected in regards to the base discussion or least discussion. Anything else? Call a question, all those in favor? As amended? One, two, three, four, those opposed? So we have four votes in favor and three that said, "We didn't vote at all," so it carries. So council, we haven't adopted the agenda yet, and we probably should before we ask if we can go on to the noise bylaw. We have a resolution here moved by Councilor Reinko, seconded by Councilor Douglas. Be resolved if council adopts the regular agenda of July 10, 2017, as amended, and the amendment is add Cow 32-2017 as item 10A, and that's the noise bylaw resolution. Any other suggestions for amendment? Councilor Reinko?
And your intention was, intention was to have this discussion subliminally, so these people can?
I will ask that after we adopt the general discussion, and if I get concurrence, we'll go ahead. So I don't see any other additions. Call a question, all those in favor? And then we'll clear this. You? An hour will ask council, would you like to go to your new business and discuss the noise bylaws? Any concurrence? I don't know yet, or maybe? Okay. So that particular resolution? Yep, I have it here. Now it's in your attendance practice. On page 37. It says be resolved, the committee of the whole recommends to council the noise bylaw 2012-100 remains as is, and let council direct the bylaw department staff to educate the public on the noise bylaw. I know we've had discussions from before. Tony, do we have provision in there for excessive noise during the day also?
Currently, the bylaw is, there's no mention. The bylaws come to a factor at 1:00. So I need to know if that is?
So my memory fails me from the previous discussions. I believe we did talk about that, but why are we leaving the recommending that the bylaws state as is?
Council had previously advised to meet with the property standards committee and we discussed it. Some of the issues brought forward was the cost to enforce a noise bylaw 24 hours a day was one of the bigger driving forces. Some of the other was is that our current bylaw for screaming and yelling and so forth, it doesn't distinguish, say, kids playing in the water, having to take on their summer vacation type of thing to experience what Tracy had at eleven o'clock at night. So there's no distinction for during the daytime. So that created a problem when we stand in front of a judge and where problems of material was encouraging participation and so forth. You're going to run into that, we're not going to get any convictions or so forth out of that. What else transpired was we're trying to educate. So we took the current bylaw, we took it to a prosecutor, Robert, or not Robert, Paul Dre. And having been with him, he advised us that we could go after the property owners. So the people that are renting that cottage that we could affect, go after them for permitting the noise to happen. So that was a discussion that we had at our meeting. And that was a step that we would like to proceed towards, to go after those cottages owner who's suing renting. Since that time, we've started our education process. So the complaints that Tracy has brought forward, we met with that property owner, he has a warning, he has a copy of his bylaw. And he is well aware that we will be coming after them if the noise we receive complaints. Since then, over the weekend, we received three more complaints about rental properties on that lake. So by law, I visited them on the weekend. We've been in touch with two of those property owners already and have read them, their warnings and so forth. But we'll be taking action against them in the future if we receive any more. And that's where we stand with this.
So that's for the nighttime noise, but?
Correct.
Nothing to address, you know?
One of the complaints that was brought forward to us is the, there's concerns with the voting and so forth that are going on the way, drinking on the way and so forth. That is nothing that we as the bylaw have any jurisdiction to enforce or anything like that, that police matter. And the police need to be called in in no circumstances.
Councilor Roberts?
Tracy laid out the number of municipalities that have brought in new legislation. She's already done the whole one. And we at least look at that and bring that to council. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. I think the wheel's already been invented, we just need to buy it. So I suggest we advise or ask the CAO yourself to look at what other jurisdictions are doing. And we can cherry pick and see what's there. I think we have to slam these people very hard. We may have to increase the amount of the fine, but it's just not fair. And as was pointed out this morning, if we don't do something, something violent will happen at some point. And we need to get this under control and under control now.
To your worship, we agree you of what our neighbors and so forth and their bylaws. There are a number of municipalities that have a 24-hour bylaw. But what's starting to happen now is a new municipality is starting to resent that bylaw and going back to eleven because they can't afford to be enforcing it during the day. Wasaga Beach and these ones over towards this side of the bay. That's where we're starting, all bylaws coming in that. So when we discussed it at that committee meeting, that we looked at that.
And now? Another Councilor Reinko?
I'll keep my comments to Myers Lake only because I do have a curfew on Six Mile Lake. But for Myers Lake, something has to be done. We have an email, I visit the site on Saturday. It is a very, very narrow lake and noise does travel very easily across a small bay there. I think we need either a temporary or permanent noise bylaw just for Myers Lake. And we can have a temporary one for a couple of years and see how it goes. But I think what Myers Lake has about sixty cottages and about a dozen of those cottages, which is a high percentage if you consider it, due to hours of the rental business. And as Tracy says, a lot of people now are buying cottages with the idea that they can't afford them, but if they rent them out, they can. And this is going to be happening more and more. But I think we do need a daytime noise bylaw for Myers Lake. And to Tony's point about kids and so on, I think we can taper the type of noise that we'll control down to not include the kids and so on, but loud speakers, swearing and activity down by the water, drinking and so on involved. So I think we can probably nail it down what we will enforce and what we won't enforce during the daytime. And I think with about a dozen of self-cottages on Myers Lake, I think with our present staff, we could target that lake this summer. Like we did in Gold Home Lake when after the camping. That was a targeted program. I think it's a targeted program for Myers Lake this summer, going after these destino self-cottages for noise during the daytime. And the specific type of noise, I think we can do with our existing staff. And I'd like to see something prepared into that there.
Council Preger?
Just some comments for consideration prior to meeting. One might be, and I'm sorry you've mentioned once, but I don't know what the level of fines are. But I think if we have the capacity to change the fines from, let's say, a thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars, something really where it hurts. I think that's one thing to consider if we can actually pull it off. The other thing I'm wondering about, I'm wondering if whether full 24-hour ban is possible to, as you point out, it's very difficult to sort of adjudicate. So I'm wondering if we could move the timeline from 11:00 to 9:00 PM or 6:00 PM or something like that, so that at least there's some peace and quiet. And it doesn't sort of conflict with that concept of children playing on beaches and that kind of thing. So if we moved it up a bit at night, people would have at least some peace in the evening hours and enjoy, they want to have some conversation or go to bed early. So that's another perspective brought I had in terms of moving the timeline along. How much more difficult would it be to do that and enforce with our staff that we already have?
Council Douglas?
Thank you, my friend. I'm going to make the suggestion that our committee get back together. Just got something to promote today with people here. Get back with my dear fellow Myers Lake. I agree with what Council Reinko was saying, I think something really has to be done. Not just unacceptable as a cottage owner, I agree with that in terms of. I know we should be staying in the city because they can't come to the cottage anymore. I don't know in what capacity we can make changes, but I do suggest that we go to the committee to see what we need, resources we have, what is possible, and what changes we can make to do and bring about council at that point.
Council Roberts?
I think it's important that we have something that covers the daytime. I'm reminded in the last term of council, when we first brought in the noise bylaw, the lady Mike Kennedy said, if you don't have a law, people can just lapage. So we have to have the legislation and we have to have it there for the daytime. And maybe it's overkill, but I think we need overkill at this point. And I am on side with putting something in, putting it in very strongly as far as the amount of time we're going to spend and the size of the fines. They'll fall into line very quickly, as all remember from the campers on Gold Home Lake. So I suggest we have an all-day thing. And then we've got the rules. If you don't have the rules, you can't do anything.
So Tony, the property standards looked at a different angle of this. Is there any issue with us sending this noise to that committee and just commission them to look at the noise bylaw and come back to us with some suggestions?
I think, if I'm understanding you, for the game, that for staff, we're following your direction. If council wants us to investigate a bylaw for Myers Lake, that we look at it for just Myers Lake, then council needs to give that direction to staff to do that. And we will look at it. I don't know what the legal aspect of that is going to be yet. Whether we can, we can't. All of the ramifications will need to be brought forward and looked at. And then presented back to council for implementation or so forth. If you're looking to do a township wide, then give us that direction. And one of the concerns is that I want you to be well aware of that we're not going to, we can't make this change overnight. This is a step that's going to take some time to implement. First of all, if we would be one month before we can bring it back to council for approval of a new bylaw, then I have to go through the legal aspects of it to get short, reforming down through the legal aspects. And I'll be honest, we're doing it. And I'm sorry to the people at Myers Lake, but the summer's going to be pretty much over by the time I would have any peace to be able to implement some of that. In the meantime, staff is out there, when they're working, we're there. We're doing extra patrols. We're educating those people. I'm to the point where I'm ready to take, if I have the documentation to be able to take one of those cottages rentals to court. We've talked to the prosecutor already, that we're ready to go after it. But I, I need your direction to tell me which way to go.
Council Roach?
I may have a different school of thought on this. Our resources are very limited in the bylaw department. And to have anyone on Myers Lake light off fireworks at 8:30 at night or 9:30 at night in the bylaw department being called because we have this 24-hour rule release, I don't think it's fair to anybody. When I go out to the cottage, I like to hoot and holler and yell and have fun and jump off the dock and swim and yell at the kids and that. At 2:00 in the afternoon. I don't understand the 24-hour day bylaw, I think, to tell you the truth. Respecting people's time to sleep is one thing. You know, at 11:00, they might keep it quiet and keep it quiet till 7:00 in the morning. If there's any infractions yet, take it to the maximum that the provincial judge will allow them to be fined. We don't set and dictate a lot of what the compensation for noise bylaws. We ought to go to court and judge the term, not us. So I think you're stepping on slippery slope here when you start talking about setting up bylaw officers at 2:00 in the afternoon because some kids are swimming at the dock and making a lot of noise. So be very careful, be careful of what you do here because the quiet families on the lake, the ones that want the peace and quiet, might light up fireworks at 9:30 at night. And the neighbors are going to call and they're going to find themselves in court because they violated a noise bylaws. Be very careful. I'm all for being quiet at nighttime when the things are ready to settle down. Don't appreciate the love of music myself. Watch yourself here. We have very, very limited resources in our bylaw. We're not the city of business.
So the gist I'm getting is yelling by adults with the swearing involved and the boombox is going off. I can't imagine that anybody would be offended by young children yelling and screaming, but I couldn't wrong. I would suggest that if it is a 24-hour or a daytime ban on certain noises, but I think Tony has hit the nail on the head, we need to take it back. I'm sure the committee can work with Tony, come up with some suggestions. And apologize to the people on Myers Lake, sometimes red tape. The municipality does take time, but if we work on this now, next year, maybe we'll have some peace and quiet out there. I'm getting a gist that maybe just try it on Myers Lake first. And if it works there, because I know there's complaints elsewhere in the municipality, but not in the concentrated problem as you have there. So I know I've got some neighbors also that are making awful lot of noise, but we just close our windows and turn our own stereo off unless we hear our own kind of music. Councilor Reinko?
I just have one more point. First of all, I don't think a noise bylaw could violate that's a separate issue. I don't think there's any regulation that violates. I think it's.
Future, I mean fireworks or dogs barking or any noise. We just have to be very careful with this.
Councilor Reinko?
I think we have to be presenting as to what types of noise we're going to control. And I think definitely it has to be on Myers Lake. What I wanted to say to Tony or ask Tony, as part of this process to deal with the next month or so, is an opportunity to meet with Myers Lake residents. I know Tracy has indicated to me that she can probably think harder and rotate together and have an educational program. And here, both sides of the story, here from the ventures, here from the non-ventures and so on, as background to development of the recommendation from the committee. Is that a possibility we can have in the next couple of weeks? I know I would want to be there. I'm sure Congress, Doug will want to be there and so on. So is there a possibility of having some kind of a meeting with these individuals? To the area chair, absolutely. This is how this is going to get resolved, the township and our area working together. I do believe that, and it's been corrected, that Tracy can tell me afterwards. I believe Green is doing everything she can to try to work within our brand or something can work with. Getting updates on it constantly. I've taken some time and been up there myself to make sure that I get things, adjust what is actually happening up there. And it's just not me sitting there and asking and thinking, I know what's going on. So obviously there is, I would be definitely be aware of that. Whatever we do here to do, to fix this, it's going to take time to fix this. And there's a lot of little things, red tape, as worship is called it, that all play into this to do it. And I think that might help with the repair so that they understand where our hands become tied because of other legal aspects and so forth. Currently, so council's aware of this, that we've done research on the noise complaints and so forth in that area. There was nothing on file leading up to this. Now, we've got it, this past weekend, we received three for that area this weekend. Bylaws already followed up with several of them. We're still going to be in touch with one of the rental properties today. There are aspects of what we're hoping to be in touch with that person. And another question that came out was thousands of dollars. Your current bylaw, your maximum fine for noise is a hundred fifty dollars.
fine for noise is a hundred and fifty dollars. So just to give you, to put everything into perspective of it, that's what it is. There are some fines within that bylaw that are a little higher, but that goes into making false statements and obstruction of justice. So just to keep that into perspective, that is, that is what we're dealing with. And I, and I understand there's not a whole lot of incentives for those cottage renters. For a hundred and fifty dollars, that's hard to change.
Okay. I need to wrap this up because I have a public meeting and it's supposed to start at 10:00. Um, I think, uh, Tony, you've heard counsel and you've got your direction. You can work with Counselor Weyankow and Counselor Douglas, being the counselors for the area. And I might suggest finding from, uh, Tracy who all the renters are and perhaps invite them to the meeting and say, this is what we're looking at, this is the problem and maybe something else will come out of that. Um, they may, uh, go out to their renters and get it calmed down earlier than, uh, we can get, uh, things passed.
But that's, that's one of the fears, worship, as I mentioned, is we don't know who the rental cottages are. That one makes me don't have that information.
I think you can find that information out pretty quick and, uh, uh, we can go from there. And bring something back to us maybe next month.
Will I agree for that?
So I'm just going to defer this resolution for the time being. The bylaw is in place, uh, currently and it's going to stay the way it is anyway, so this is kind of moot at this point. Okay, folks, um, just one thing, we, we've received all kinds of emails, but we're not the bylaw department, okay? We do forward them on, but if you have a noise complaint, call bylaw or the OPP. Don't just send a counselor an email. That's, you know, where, uh, the bylaw department gets the information, starts to file on that particular building, this, uh, breaking the rules. Okay? So thanks very much for coming and letting us know. Sorry you had to come under the circumstances, but, uh, we're certainly trying to get something done. Okay. I guess, um, we should probably take a five-minute break and then get to our, uh, in public meetings. So this morning, there's a public meeting scheduled for two shore road closing applications and I'll briefly summarize the procedure. First, the clerk will advise counsel as to when, how, and to whom notice of the public meeting was circulated and the deputy clerk will summarize any correspondence on file. Next, the deputy clerk will advise of the purpose and effect of the bylaw and provide for any other information that is relevant to the application. From there, the applicant and members of the public will have an opportunity to speak to the bylaws being considered. Counsel will then consider the bylaw immediately following. I now declare this meeting to be a public meeting pursuant to the Municipal Act SO 2001 C-25 as amended to deal with the following proposed road closing bylaws. Two thousand seventeen dash twelve, Muzits, Muzitska, is that how, how it's pronounced? And two thousand seventeen dash sixty-three, Stasiak.
Notice, notice that the public meeting was published in the newspaper and notice was sent to the abiding neighbors in close proximity of the property at least 20 days prior to today's meeting.
Good. And to our staff.
The first application is for three-two-four-six Twelve Mile Bay Road. It's for, um, our council deferred the application to purchase the shore road allowance in February two thousand seventeen as the property owner had structures located on the road allowance. The applicant with recommendations chose to apply to purchase part of the road allowance. The total area to be sold is eight hundred and ten square meters. The shore road allowance will be at a rate of eight dollars per square meter and the road allowance at a rate of six dollars per square meter for a total of six thousand one hundred and sixty dollars plus HST. Stats have no concerns and there were no letters or correspondence to seek for this application.
Okay. Is the applicant here today? No? Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this application? No? Okay. I'll bring it into, uh, counsel's hands. It's moved by Counselor Douglas, seconded by Counselor Edwards. We have resolved that council passed bylaws two thousand seventeen dash twelve and two thousand seventeen dash thirteen being a bylaw to stop up and close the shore road allowance and part of the road allowance adjacent to and in front of three-two-four-six Twelve Mile Bay Road and a deeming bylaw to deem the property no longer on a plan of subdivision. So open it up to counsel for questions, comments. Counsel Weyankow?
Do you go to the one before that? We didn't get that particular, okay, we didn't get that particular slide. I want to go back.
Through your worship, this slide was a part of the previous, uh, report.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question then. All who are in favor, and that carries. And to our staff, uh, the second application.
The second, the second application is for four-eight-zero-four Go Home Lake Shore. Um, the applicant wishes to increase the lot size and it's, uh, the total area to be sold is eight hundred and seventy-seven square meters at a rate of eight dollars per square meter for a purchase price of seven thousand sixteen dollars plus HST. There were no comments received and stats have no concern.
Thank you. Is the applicant here today? Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this application? Seeing none, I'll bring it into counsel's hands. It's moved by Counselor Edwards, seconded by Counselor Weyankow. We have resolved that council passed bylaw two thousand seventeen dash sixty-three being a bylaw to stop up and close the shore road allowance in front of four-eight-zero-four Go Home Lake Shore. So open it up to council members for questions, comments. Counselor Weyankow?
Where is this line here? It's the end of the.
That's the, through your worship, this, that's the line separating the different parts, the part four from the, the part to the north there.
So what are they purchasing then? Part four?
They're only purchasing part four.
So they aren't purchasing the east here?
Correct.
And that's, are you charging them or?
No.
The block line comes down the, down the line there.
No.
So they're just purchasing.
So, so what is the block here? No place. I'm watching there.
It's, it's not a lot, like this holds one part here and then go on to the block.
So it's in front of us. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All who are in favor, and that carries. Okay. That closes our public meeting. So we'll move on to, uh, communications and where do we start this time? I think we'll start with Counselor Edwards.
Been involved in a number of matters, uh, and attended the R.C.E.'s, uh, annual meeting and just to thank Jessica and we're doing a fabulous job, um, bringing forth our, um, more accommodating, borderless, update rules and, uh, I think everybody was very, very, very appreciative, um, and, uh, I just want to thank Jessica for that.
Okay. Counselor Kay?
Okay. I've attended the O.L.F. party, uh, graduation, uh, room two, two, two. to thank Jessica and we're doing a fabulous job bringing forth our more accommodating, borderless, update rules and I think everybody was very, very, very appreciative and I just wanted to thank Jessica for that.
Okay, Councilor Kay?
Okay, I've attended the OLM barbecue graduation, two students graduating, and it was quite, quite a special show. I think everybody was a little sad. Also attended the OLM barbecue in Oakton House on June twenty-sixth and it was expected to be attended, there was at any given time, there was over a hundred people there coming and going, so I don't know if I'm in town, but it disappeared within the first hour. I know they got a hundred million hot dogs in ninety hamburgers. July first, ten today, at Honey Harbor Park landing. It was extremely successful, there was a dedication which was attended by six council members and Bernard Dickinson gave an excellent dedication speech for the founding members of our founding families of Lake Harbor. The library gets a book sale and the province has activities for the kids, they made an exception about a hundred dollars from the book sale donation and books are still for sale at the library if you're interested. Books are two dollars, kids' books are all. There was letters from the Ministry of Education regarding the meeting until the May. There are plans to strengthen rural and northern Ontario education. Final report from the province will be in the office. Results to date have been approved. Province will recall in the art process, is remortgaging on all reviews and will not reconsider past decisions unfortunately. Province is going to review the guidelines for better communication between school boards, municipal government and other community partners. Twenty million dollars additional funding for the support of learning, investment in broadens needs for experiential learning opportunities and additional support from the school boards to share space with each other, priority given to joining the school. Earlier this year on the water, I was seeing the steel standing, kind of aluminum standing boat up there, it actually docked, parked in front of the cottage, and then all of a sudden a net appeared. So the boat was not indicated and you could tell it was MNFR, but a net appeared. Anyway, I find it charging down and it's out of the, the Owen Sound office and they're conducting a five-year evaluation of nearshore fishing. It's part of the Great Lakes Water Quality Agreement funded between Canada and Ontario. Basically, what MNR is doing, they're doing a spring ball like net index, they're doing a spring musty netting, they're doing end of spring trap netting, they're doing broad scale monitoring to measure fish diversity and water quality, they're doing small fish form monitoring, they're doing fall ball like netting to determine overwintered areas. And during the netting, during the netting sessions, all the fish capture will be tagged and released. I do have a report here that the MNFR would love to get feedback from the people if they happen to catch a fish which is tagged. And I will be getting a report at the end of this year from what MNFR has made of the files to date regarding all of this information. And they will also at some point issue new fish habitat in the center town, Honey Harbor, and probably a little bit of the population on the fish habitat. And I'll give this to you if you want. And anything else?
Okay, thank you. Councilor Bocek?
I attended the public school graduation at Honey Harbor, which was very well attended, as well as I attended the Catholic school grading graduation where I was introduced as Mayor Brian Bocek, which I thought was kind of comedic. However, I did give the regrets that the mayor was unable to attend to a previous committee. Took part in the Canada One Fifty event, a very, very successful event in the Port Severn Park. Myself along with other volunteers spent the day cooking hamburgers, hot dogs, corn on the cob, where for a hundred and fifty cents you could buy anything you wanted. It was attended by over fifteen hundred people, we don't have the exact number yet. There was an antique boat show, there was a car show, there was a bouncing trampoline for the kids, it was quite a great family day. And being a member of the events committee, we decided to make it a non-alcoholic event, a family-friendly event, and I think because of that, we ended up with one of the biggest tournaments we've ever had. It was a very good event. During that event, I had to leave midday, went down to the Honey Harbor Park where the Honey Harbor Co-op was putting on a celebration and again, they did do a dedication to the founding families from Honey Harbor, and that was what it depends. Outside of that, just dealing with some of the regular things that councillors do in the way of meeting with constituents and talking about things with someone in the building, and that's it. Your turn.
Thank you. Councilor Reanko?
So in time, it's always a busy time for me. Started in June seventeenth, I attended the Six Mile Lake bylaw, the bylaw meeting for a couple of hours. And then this past Friday, Councilor Bocek and I attended the Six Mile Lake AGM and there was no drama this year, so it went fairly smoothly and it was quite a good meeting. On the twenty-eighth of June, I attended a celebration at the Muskoka Airport. Some of you may remember in previous discussions that the Muskoka Airport was a training area for the Norwegian Air Force back in World War II, and there were several thousand pilots that went through that airport. And this year was the seventy-fifth anniversary of that, of that flight school. And at the ceremonies on the twenty-eighth, we had the councillor general from Norway and even the mayor from a town called Gull. And Gull is a twin city with Bracebridge and they've been exchanging students over the years, so there was quite a good attendance from there. Like Councilor Bocek, on July first, I attended the Port Severn Canada One Fifty celebrations. That was kind of the pinnacle of a lot of work that I've been involved in over the last year or so on, and I'm very, very happy that the numbers, they got the numbers that turned out. And I want to publicly thank Marilyn Taylor, the president, Gloucester Pool, who pretty well with her family put on that event and so, great appreciation for her work. Also, the same day, I attended with the other councillors a Honey Harbor dedication. And that evening, we had the fireworks over by Christie's Mill, which I understand, or at least I was there and it was very, very well done and I think Jessica saw it down the bay, so it was a very good event. On July second, I attended the Mac Tier, there was two dedications up at Mac Tier. We rededicated the one-hundredth anniversary plaque and dedicated two thousand, how much? A hundred and fifty year plaque over by the library. And then on Saturday, I was, I attended, went down to see Tracy down at Myers Lake and got appreciation for the size of the lake and the problems they're having now.
Okay, Councilor Douglas?
Thank you. Well, I'm, just to start off with letting everyone know that of course, for those who don't know, we had a fire in Mac Tier and lost our restaurant there, which was a bit of a sad occasion, not a great way to start summer for them, to speak with the family and spend a bit of time in that area. Like my fellow councillors, Canada One Fifty long weekend was quite busy. I was able to participate in the Port Severn flipping hamburgers while maybe serving them. Super well attended and I, my congratulations to the event committee and everyone that was involved in that because it turned out to be a fantastic event, very well attended. I also was able to go down to Honey Harbor with my fellow councillors again for the rededication of the, of the, or the plaque that was unveiled for the founding families there. It was a lovely event as well and the weather actually held out pretty good for us, a little bit of rain, but nothing too major. Later in the day, I was able to attend the Christie Mills festivities and the fireworks was absolutely amazing, I will say. And then the following day, I ended up in Mac Tier with game, my fellow councillors, and Norm Miller, Julie Clement for the unveiling of the rededication of the baseball plaque, which was very beautiful and also for the library. And besides from that, just correspondence with our constituents and dealing with few issues such as the Myers Lake.
Thank you. Councilor Prentice?
Thank you, Mayor Bray. Busy month as well, district meetings of course, scope of tourism meetings, on and on it goes. Canada One Fifty celebrations, I attended some of those, not all of them, but in the Cog Machine community, was able to attend an event that was during the day, something like a hundred and fifty people were in attendance at a function and then fireworks that evening. All of these, by the way, in that particular community, were not funded by rate payers but by the actual community itself. And attended the AGM yesterday, or sorry, on Saturday at the Cog Machine area and I just wanted to echo the comments from Councilor Edwards that our clerk, acting clerk Jessica, spoke exceedingly well about how to get back on the voters list. And I hope a lot of people will do that and make sure that they are on the voters list because the voters list is significantly down from what it was ten years ago. And I think Jessica's attitude was a can-do attitude to try and get people back on was noticed by a large number of people and I want to thank her very much for that attitude.
Thank you. Okay. So, I might be repeating a few things here, but the first item, I received an email through Bob Dunkinson about a army flare that had been found up in Go Home Bay and they called in the authorities and decided to detonate it right there and apparently this thing went off like a bomb and shook foundations and rattled windows and all that. But, so I'm working with Bob and I've also forwarded all this stuff to Tony Clement just because of the dangerous nature of this sort of thing. Nobody knows what would happen if you ran into it with a steel held boat or it happened to be laying on top of the ice in the winter in a snowmobile or ran over it or whatever. So, we'll get to the bottom of it and report back and we'll keep our fire chief informed also. I too attended a lot of the festivities for the July first event and overwhelmed with the number of people that came to Port Severn. I saw people from way up north of the township that I knew attended it and from the Honey Harbor area. I'd like to, in a minute, make sure that we personally thank Marilyn and Tom Taylor for stepping forward and organizing the Port Severn event. I know they were practically pulling their hair at times, but a number of other volunteers stepped in and helped out. So, I know Marilyn came up to me on the Saturday and she says, "I can't believe all the people that are here." So anyways, they said, "Well, that's good advertising and great events for the kids" and so on. Mac Tier, I was up there for the rededication and a, and a new dedication for that. I also attended the Mac Tier Public School graduation and there were sixteen graduates this year. And Councilor Douglas was there also helping me pass out the checks and the pins and congratulate them all. And I thank Councilor Kay and Councilor Bocek for taking over for me for Our Lady of Mercy and the Honey Harbor Public School graduations. Sometimes these things fall on nights where I have other events, such as District Council. And Mayor Bocek, thank you very much. Well appreciated that you were able to attend and make the presentation. The OLM barbecue on the twenty-fifth, I took Mary Ann and Sarah out there and there were a lot of people there. I venture to say at any given time, there was over two hundred people floating around the school. And yes, it was a sad time. As I understand it, representatives from trillion Lakelands have toured the school, so there is something going on there. There is that possibility that they, they may take over that school. So we'll see what happens, keep our fingers crossed. There's new election rules out, we have been apprised of a lot of them, the nomination day happens in May and it ends a little earlier. But the one big thing that bothers me in particular is that now the district chair is going to be elected at large. So that means anybody that wants to run for basically the mayor of Muskoka or as it's called, the district chair in the act, they're going to have to petition all around Muskoka and I can tell you, it takes you two and a half hours to drive from one corner to the other. And the number of meetings that they will have to go to to voice their opinion and let you know. And their spending limit's going to be somewhere around seventy-five thousand dollars, so anybody that wants to run, if you've got seventy-five thousand dollars cash kicking around, be my guest, but it wouldn't be anything I'd be interested in personally. The Canada One Fifty train, I don't know whether anybody knows much about it, but it's coming across Canada, it starts late July and goes into August, and it's going to be running through Mac Tier but not stopping there. I tried to get them to do that, but it'll stop in Sudbury, Hamilton, or Toronto and if you just Facebook Canada One Fifty train or CP or just Google it, you can find out the actual dates. But it will be running through Mac Tier and hopefully the noise bylaw doesn't have a problem with it because it'll be between midnight and one AM on August ninth. So maybe somebody will go out there and wave to them as they roll through. And that's all I have at this point. So Laurie, I'll turn it over to you.
I have a few orders.
Okay, great. So we'll move on to item nine A. Okay, so this rescinding of the resolution was something that we discussed in closed session last time and we recommended that it come to open council for discussion, but first of all, we have to do a reconsider to bring the resolution forward. So, moved by Councilor Reanko, seconded by Councilor Douglas, we have resolved a council reconsider resolution, C dash two sixty-one dash twenty sixteen from the October eleventh, twenty sixteen council meeting, which reads, "We have resolved that council directs staff that all building permits for cottages, bunkies and single-family dwellings that are three years old and have not started construction be revoked except where an owner can demonstrate significant progress to the chief building official to a maximum of nine months as determined by the CBO. And that the chief building official report back to council annually where this discretion has been exercised and that Cow Resolutions forty-one dash twenty sixteen and one forty-three dash twenty thirteen are be rescinded and that particular resolution carried that day." Questions, comments? Questions, comments on reconsideration? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of reconsidering. Okay, Matt Carey, thank you. Moved by Counselor Douglas, seconded by Counselor Reinko, be resolved that council rescind resolution, C-261-2016, dated October 11, 2016, which reads... And do you need me to reread that same resolution again? Okay. So, open it up to council for questions, comments. I'll go to Counselor Reinko first.
Well, I think somebody needs to explain why I'm rescinding it. I don't know who that would be.
Maybe that's where you were going to chime in.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't, but again, we got some advice that it would be inappropriate for council to be veteran expression of the CBO, the independent body, not for council. But why would we rescind it? The reason I handled it, when I listened to the resolution, we, in that resolution, contained a, you know, a previous resolution, which I think is something to do. So, I'm not quite sure how to, how to put it, like, handle that. Does that make sense?
So, a ghost resolution still makes me rescind it?
Yes. But not only is the goal, we need to be, the old ones, these are your old ones. Because the new one, those fixing old ones, we should have handled them.
But we have to rescind the resolution in total. Peace may well happen, I wouldn't think.
That will be...
But we can either pass another one to rescind over, to make it... Just hang on a second there. I haven't put... To keep it all in one resolution, I would suggest that we just add on to the end of this, and that Cow Resolutions remain rescinded or continue to be rescinded. Okay, so, in addition to rescinding the bylaw, we want to continue with the rescinding of those two Cow Resolutions. So, we've added in, and that Cow Resolutions 41-2016 and 143-2013 are remain rescinded. Any further discussion? Counselor Edwards?
There's still a concern, and I'm not sure everybody understands. Took me a while to understand what was happening. Most business valleys cancel building permits if they're not started within a year to two years, almost everywhere in the province. We were not doing that, and the advantage was that a builder could come, or an owner could come, felt this builder applied for a building permit before the laws changed, and we were justifying it on the basis of the revenue we were receiving. That is not the way the game's supposed to be played. And I was at an event on the weekend where I heard references to somebody still having an open building permit or eight or nine years ago. I haven't followed up to make sure that is the case, but what it does send is a message out to other people who say, "How can so-and-so do X?" Oh, well, he got the building permit seven or eight years ago, and he's allowed to do that. So, I think, I have a lot of concern. I just wish that our township could follow the general rules that are followed in other disciplines across the province.
So, I think, you could have asked Dave. It's my understanding, and it should be all of council's understanding, that our CBO, with the provisions in the building product, is canceling building permits. So, Counselor Reinko, you had a...
I had the same question, wouldn't know. How are we going to handle this situation? I'd like to hear definitely directly from Dave, and the public can hear what, how Dave is going to handle this situation, but I think it's important that people understand that we're just not walking away... Period. Dave, I think we need to hear from you. How are you going to handle this situation going forward on canceling permits, so the public can understand that we're not walking away from the issue, but there is a plan B?
We'll follow our standard operating policy that we have in place, not the rules that could... We will still cancel permits that have inspired construction after three years, unless there are requests coming in, and moving forward. We'll look out for things on the building, bunkies, and cottages. We're not going to stop doing what we've done. We'll keep moving forward.
Okay. So, no more questions? A fellow question, all those in favor? If there's any opposed? Moved by Counselor Reinko, seconded by Counselor Douglas, be resolved that council authorizes the mayor and clerk to enter into a lease with wind debt community programs for use of the nurse practitioner space in the community services building. There is a report on the agenda. Anybody have any questions on that? Seeing none, then I'll call the question. All those in favor? Matt Carey, thank you. Moved by Counselor Reinko, seconded by Counselor Edwards, be resolved that council pass bylaw 2017-62 being a deeming bylaw to deem 17548 Georgian Bayshore and lot 25 of Plan M260 not on a plan of subdivision. And that report is also in your agenda. Are there questions? Counselor Kay?
Okay. The shore rule allows for purchase?
No.
Okay. And in certain reports, there are two active permits and two applications for them. What part of it?
Sorry, I missed that.
Sorry, for the deeming bylaw?
Mm-hmm.
There are two acts, the reports say there are two active permits and applications for them on that property?
Correct.
What are they?
Or you don't... Actually, I don't have that information with me right now. I'll do it.
I'm just, my concern is that it's too long to merge. I'm afraid that the two cottages being furnished are still, or a white cottage, a bunkie, or what part of it?
I don't believe that they're two separate cottages. From my understanding, it was a bunkie. They're like accessory structures. But I can confirm that for you if you'd like, or...
Because, you just because it's too familiar to a loss. You want one or two of them to merge. The other thing is, I've mentioned this before, when you, when the map is shown, is there any way you could anything identify on it, if you have a familiar with it?
Oh, I see, like, the overall picture.
We can do that in feature.
Yeah.
So, does this allow these lots to be severed again, or are implications come forward for potential severance in the future?
As council aware, anyone is entitled to apply to sever their property, it's whether or not it's granted. As far as I know, this was an error made previously, and the properties were never supposed to be divided into two. They're owned by the same person. As far as I know, there is only one cottage on it, and it's not to have it sort of compound, it's just to correct a legal mistake that was made.
I'll order you to pass the paper.
Yes, I will.
So, no need to defer? Any other questions? Call the question, all those in favor? And Matt Carey. Apparently, the air conditioning works really well in here. Your teeth chattering to my left. Okay, so moved by Counselor Bocheck, seconded by Counselor Reinko, be resolved that council adopt bylaw 2017-56 being a zoning bylaw amendment to permit a tertiary sewage treatment system on Sados Island, which is two island 20, and to permit an addition to a sleeping cabin and a deck on the sleeping cabin. Questions or comments? Counselor Edwards?
I have a lot of problems with this one. First of all, when conditions have been made illegally, council is supposed to look at the request as if the building hadn't taken place. Therefore, if this is approved, council is effectively saying, "They would have approved this application if it had come in." That sets us up for precedent up and down the bay, because the way then that people should build on a small island would be, "Go ahead with the building, and then come to the township and ask for forgiveness, and we will give you forgiveness." So, that is the basic fundamental issue that I see. It's a terrible precedent. The second one is that we took another person who had significant setbacks on a much larger property. We took him all the way to the OMP, and I sat and listened as our staff said, "We never give any variances or allowances with regard to setbacks." So, I have a lot of problems as to how we are consistently applying the law. The third thing will be, I am understanding that this will be going to the OMP if it's approved today, and I want to make sure that it isn't the township that's going to be responsible for any of the costs at the OMP. That's what I'm concerned about. If we're not spending money defending something, that is the responsibility of the owners.
Counselor Cooper?
I have a number of concerns about this as well. I think we are, at the moment, considering something that will set a precedent, which is very concerning. Essentially, we have 219 undersized islands on coastal Georgia Bay with residential structures, and almost exclusively, those islands have holding tanks, not tertiary systems, especially tertiary systems that aren't properly setback. And I think this is a big mistake. We're just asking for a number of other property owners to come forward and say, "I'd like to have one of these, too." And, you know, there's this assumption that tertiary systems are magic, and there seems to be, from Source Water, there's findings that say that they're not that magic. And I think we have a problem here. So, my suggestion is a number of things, but one is, I hope, by the way, our fellow counselors have read a very, very comprehensive letter which came in from Mr. David Flowers last week identifying some of the serious problems with this. And I think we would be well served to pay attention to those things that have been brought to our attention. It is my understanding that it's being claimed, according to what I'm reading in these reports, that this system meets OBC setbacks. There's a question about that, and there's a good ques... There's a high likelihood that this will be at the OMP. The township, if it's going to defend this, will be acting in a fashion that is not followed the practices that the township has used in the past in terms of defending something like this if it's approved today. So, then that means it's really going to be up to the applicant to defend themselves at the OMP. Finally, I would suggest that before we approve this today, I think this needs a peer review. There are still problems, and my recommendation is that we have a peer review to make sure that there isn't a problem with this, because it appears that there are some serious problems. Thank you.
Counselor Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor Bray. Dave, can I just ask you to comment on the system they're planning on putting in? I'm sure you've got a lot of experience with this and are very familiar with this file. Could you just give us your overview as to your feeling on what's being proposed here?
After reviewing the file, I believe that it meets the building code and it'd be in queue for the setbacks. The system has just underwent regular testing, and it got the new approval in Quebec, and it's one of the ones, there's a couple of them that I'm familiar with that do have the new approval.
Do you satisfy the consistency in that?
It meets the Ontario Building Code.
Thank you.
Counselor Reinko? Again, my question's to Dave. You went on site, and you basically gave him some instructions or orders to put in a proper system, and they've gone ahead and designed something that seems to meet your criteria. Now, other people are suggesting a holding tank. What's your feeling between having, how comfortable you are with this system versus the requirement to put a holding tank? Other words, you're not going to allow a holding tank because they can put this system in, or where do you stand on this position?
This system has a maintenance contract agreement, and it's been tested yearly, and there's ratings. To me, you've got somebody who owns this property here around. With the Ontario Building Code for regulations for holding tanks, I can't issue a holding tank where they can get a class four system on the property, and then you have the zoning bylaws, so...
So, you're not, basically, you're not even going to consider a holding tank because you know they can put this... So you're not, basically, you're not even going to consider a holding tank because you know they can put this system in? Is that where you're going?
I support this system does meet our needs of the Ontario Building Code.
Councillor Bocheck?
I've heard a lot of talk about precedents setting. And if we're going to set a precedent of taking out a gray water pit and privy and installing a acceptable tertiary system through the Ontario Building Code, I think it's a good precedent for setting. We're telling people that no longer can they have privies and gray water, collection areas, incinerating toilets, that they need to install a proper setback system. I think the problem that comes up here is maybe, well, the two councillors here have mentioned, it's probably a problem of policy more than a problem of anything else. This is met and complied with the Ontario Building Code S S E. Township pays, no concern. Township severance has no concerns. District and Skoka has no concerns. Engineering consultants that have used said this is an approved system. I think we're doing a good service to the bay by enforcing the laws we have in place and making people install a setback system where there's one currently not in place. So I am going to continue to support this in lieu of the fact this would have happened two years ago, and we wouldn't be worried about rain runoff and everything else that this system had in place two years ago that they could find me setback. And for the last two years, things have carried on the same way that... My thought is if this doesn't get passed, then it's going to continue to do exactly what it has been doing. And we're setting the precedent saying it's okay to have a tertiary or a gray water pit in privy. I don't see where this is going. So I'm in favor, and I've publicly said many times, I'm in favor of getting a proper setbacking system installed on this island, stop any applicants from entering into the bay.
Any other comments? Councillor Edwards?
Just to confirm, when this goes to the O M P, the applicant is responsible for engaging an expert witness, is that correct? The township isn't getting stuck with any of these costs?
Jamie?
To your worship, if the applicant's case, it's up to the council whether they want to defend this. If the council can attend the hearing and defend the bylaw they passed, it's up to the council whether they want to do that. Typically, in a situation like this, the applicant would hire their own planning consultant, would hire their own lawyer, bring their own case lawyer. And it would be up to the township whether or not they wanted to defend the bylaw they passed. The decision, the council, on how they wanted to proceed in that.
But really, am I correct that, I mean, normally, it's the applicant that pays? Is that normally the case?
To your worship, I'm not sure historically if the applicant paid the municipality fees. I'll say it would be there. My experience is some municipalities do require, when an application is submitted, that the applicant signs a form saying we go to the O M P. The municipality is responsible for all the municipality's costs. I don't think that's early practice and did in practice in your area.
Okay, just to make, that's what I want to confirm.
Councillor Cooper?
Just on that point, I have gone back to sort of research some of this, and it appears that's the practice that is actually the applicant has, in almost all cases, paid for the defense.
Seeing no more questions, I'm going to call a question. And the bylaw is 2017-60. There was a misprint on the resolution. Request for a recorded vote? Councillor Cooper?
Councillor Douglas? Councillor Douglas?
Yes.
Councillor Edwards?
No.
Councillor Kayden?
Yes.
Councillor Langke?
Yes.
Councillor Bocheck?
Yes.
Mayor Bray?
Yes.
Carries.
A motion, 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 resolution moved by councillor Reinko, seconded by councillor Edwards. Be resolved that council directs staff to respond to the developer. Report severance states that the township is not amenable to the requested changes to the development agreement. So there's quite the report in there. We'll open it up to questions, comments. Councillor Reinko?
Let me just go to Jamie. My understanding there has been development already in that area that's not been, I don't know, authorized, but they didn't have all the duck in a row on some of those developments. Do you know, have you been about the history on this whole thing?
To your worship, I'm going to defer that to the Director of Operations. I mean, you've got more information on that. Please, I hope that...
Mr. Mayor, can you clarify, was it two phases? I'm not sure if you're speaking to the first phase or the second phase.
I don't know what phase I'm actually talking about, but I understand that, I think maybe it's the second phase, where there has been some construction of homes in there, and they didn't have all the pre-approvals for that.
To the mayor, I don't believe that is correct. There hasn't been any new home construction in the second phase. Only in the third phase, we wouldn't issue building permits.
So you did issue building...
No, we would not issue building permits for the second phase until it's got to a certain point.
Because I guess there was a history, and I just wanted to find out. Maybe councillor Bocheck might know the history more than I do, but I think it's worthwhile knowing the history of this property.
Councillor Bocheck?
To your mayor, the first division was built back in the early 1990s and is completed. There's still a few lots that are independently owned in Phase One. Phase Two, there was a road that was put in, and there was lots separated and entrance ways for lots put in. There's been no further development since that happened. There's no current homes being built. One of the things we have noticed is that a real estate agent is selling the lots currently, but I believe they found out that the status of the lots are not sufficient, they shouldn't be sold. But that's a topic for a different day. But no, there has been no construction outside the building and the roads and the entrance ways into the proposed lots.
So Brad, the agreement was set up many, many years ago. Would that agreement still be the same today, or would there be a lot of difference? Because as soon as the developer opens this thing up, we could go to new standards.
To the mayor, the agreement would be much different today. Many of the conditions would be the same, there would be some additional conditions, but it would be much tighter and easier to enforce than the current agreement.
And I have a funny feeling that district might get involved with water sewer also, since a line runs across right in front of the road that would be going in there. So careful what you wish for. Any further questions, comments on the resolution? Call a question, all those in favor. And the resolution carries. Couple of bylaws here. Moved by... Okay, he's not signing differently today. Moved by councillor Paul W. Seconded by councillor Edwards. Be resolved that council adopt bylaw 2017-61 being an updated remuneration bylaw for non-union staff. So there's a report in there, you should be familiar with what's going on here. Questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question, all those in favor. And that one carries. And moved by councillor Reinko, seconded by councillor Edwards. Be resolved that council adopts the updated schedule to bylaw 2017-25 being a parking on private property bylaw. So that report's also in the agenda, page 153, questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question, all those in favor. And that one carries. Moved by councillor Reinko, seconded by councillor Edwards. Be resolved that council adopts bylaw 2017-64 being a bylaw confirming the proceedings of the July 10, 2017 meeting.
Can you hear the question?
Yep. Call a question, all those in favor. That one carries. And finally, moved by councillor Reinko, seconded by councillor Edwards. Be resolved that council does now adjourn at 11:21 a.m. until Monday, August 14, 2017, at 9 a.m. or at the call of the chair. All those in favor? And I think it carries. Okay, it does. And we've had a request for a break before we indulge committee of the whole. So we'll take five minutes. So it will take five minutes.
like to review the file and look at that, because when council passes something, we expect that it's going to be carried through. And as far as I'm concerned, these are not minor amendments. These are not, you know, putting in commas, et cetera. These are some standard changes, and therefore, that's why I want to sit down and see what's in the file before I go any further. I'm just doing my due diligence.
Counselor Bochek?
Being that this just came up and was unannounced, and we've been talking about it in light of the editorial that was put in the Georgia Bay today, whatever it is, authored by Kathy Cooper, that is in direct relation to what Counselor Edwards is speaking of now, I would like to declare a conflict of interest.
So do I have an ability to sit down with Laurie and Jane and go over what is in the file, to try and understand how the changes were made between what was approved and what was executed?
See you, Al.
Eddie, also, welcome to look at the file. I've already experienced nothing in the file.
Well, I'd just like to go through that before I go to the next step.
Any other comments? So I'm going to vacate the chair and...
Oh, he hasn't been back in yet, so just a second.
Oh, so we're calling a vote on, where is the... This one here? So be resolved that the committee of the whole receives the review of the property leases report for information purposes. All those in favor? Opposed?
I'm just too late to give a...
Okay, okay. So...
Hearing.
Thank you. Here we go.
Okay. Now, anyway.
Thank you. It resolve that committee of the whole recommends council direct staff to execute a letter of engagement with real term energy to conduct an investment grade audit of the township's streetlight system, and that upon receipt of the audit results, staff report back to council with options and a recommendation. That report is also in your agenda. Questions or comments? You have something to add to the...
Yes, Larry.
I got to write a short novel here. I understand you've already voted on it, so I will put my topic on as a separate one next meeting. Move by Counselor Cooper, seconded by Counselor Douglas. It resolve that committee of the whole recommends that council direct staff to execute a letter of engagement with real term energy to conduct an investment grade audit of the township's streetlight system, and that upon receipt of the audit results, staff report back to council with options and a recommendation. That report is also in your agenda. Questions or comments? Counselor Bochek?
My question is for Brad. Brad, was there an opportunity that we missed here where there was a sentence or a discount given, a period of time where LED was at the forefront? I remember in my first few months at council, we had a discussion about this, and it was the ability to get funding or something like that for these LED lights. I'm just wondering if that's passed, and now we're going to deal with this as a budget item?
To the mayor, I'm not aware of any other different programs that were available other than this one, which is a bit of a refund from either one through a program that they have run as well as possible funding through ALIAS or contractors. There was quite a bit of work done in the last four or five years with the front of this across Ontario, where seemingly one of the last municipalies to look into this, and some of them were funded by the contractor or by ALIAS, and some were funded in general. So I'm not aware of another program. There is some talk that the current program might be phased out, or maybe terminated next year, but there hasn't been anything filed.
And so sort of that, do you think that this is something that we should call our EDO, or a position of the EDO, to search and find out if there is any funding, any other funding provincially or federally available for doing this, this action?
To the mayor, I'm happy to speak to them and have to look into it. I would suggest that because it's in the contractor and ALIAS' best interest to get these projects done, I believe that they're right on top of most of the opportunities we have to save.
Any other questions? Call a question, all those in favor. Carrie's, thank you. Move by Counselor Douglas, seconded by Counselor Cooper. It resolve that committee of the whole recommends council direct staff to execute a letter of engagement with Conrad Lighting Solutions to conduct an investment grade audit of the Mactier Arena facility, and that upon receipt of the audit results, staff reports back to council with options and a recommendation. That report is also in your agenda. Questions or comments? You have something to add to the...
Ernie, your question. Since right in this report, we receive some information back from the contractor. Payback, which I'm sure everybody's interested in, for the rent is probably around nine and a half years, and for the facility is probably around 14 years. So from a strictly financial standpoint, you definitely justify this from an energy saving, greenout gas, et cetera standpoint, that's our foundation for proceeding with this.
Any questions? Counselor Edwards?
So what do you see as the next step then, I mean, with this comment that you've now received back from Conrad?
The next step is to do a more detailed audit. The information they gave me is based, in large part on assumptions, based on projects they've done, and passing a little bit of information you sent out as well as just like this. So they want to work a lot, actually, on doing proper inventory of the lighting there, and then get back to us with what, A, what exactly caused, B, what the savings would be, and C, what the different benefits would be to the township.
Additional?
Within all of this, are we taking into account what the life of the actual building might be? I mean, I just hate to put in new lighting and then find out five years without the place now. I mean...
To the mayor, this is based on, no, the answer is no. The assumption is basically that the building will be functioning at least for next 14 years, because the payback is for the banquet area and the halls.
I'd like to, Counselor Rienko, then Counselor Kay?
So I think what you're saying, basically, it's not worth spending $3,000 for an assessment when you kind of know that the payback is going to be nine, nine to 14 years. So why waste money now, and we may not accept the results?
To the mayor, from a strictly financial standpoint, I can definitely justify this from an energy saving and environmental standpoint, that's where my money is in consideration.
So are you suggesting we spend the $3,000 or not?
From a, my 300 perspective, my personal 300 perspective, yes. From a, I'm not a master builder, and therefore, there's definitely...
Counselor Kay?
Do we know what the actual costs are for lighting today?
To the mayor, do you know the cost?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what else would be included in the cost of the problem.
You just, I don't think I'll be able to find it in a reasonable amount of time. Leave the costs, just for lighting.
Yes.
Electricity and maintenance are in the order of $4,500 a year, and after this program, they reduce to around $2,000. And the savings is through electricity, and the savings is through maintenance, because they are warranted for 10 years. But just the fixtures are warranted for 10 years. The labor is included, labor is only included for two years.
10 years plus the last hour?
35,000 hours.
From what I've heard, they've been lasting longer than they've been suggested. If they're going to go, they go in the first year. If they don't go in the first year, then usually last 10 or 12 years.
They're looking at a day of $1,000 a year.
That would be my suggestion.
Counselor Edwards?
Should we be looking at the total energy cost? Because I assume the total energy cost for the building is a much bigger number.
To the mayor, when they look at the energy savings, they also look at, there's a deduction in heat from the LED lights as opposed to current fire reserve. So they take that into account in the savings on the plant. I think that answers your question, but if not...
Well, I was really thinking is, you know, presumably with the life of the plant, are we just picking up one small light and being electricity? Should we be thinking about, are there other ways to cool these things? I have no idea, never had thought cooling is cool. To the mayor, I have a hope about this. It's not a big number, $3,000 actually.
So Brad, how did they come up with this payback in nine years? I mean, Ontario Hydro's got an application before the Energy Board right now for an increase. Premier Wynn's saying we're not going to have an increase for four years because of her initiative, other than cost of living increase. Well, that's a variable every year. And the other thing is, you know, as her plan opened up, we found out that it was basically only permanent residents that were going to get this discount, and no increase. It had nothing to do with industry, or commercial, or municipalities, or seasonal residents. They're not getting that discount. So, I don't know, if, you know, payback could be a lot less if Ontario Hydro seems to get their way and increases the stuff. I mean, in four years, it sounds like it's going to be an open game for a huge increase, so...
To the mayor, this is quickly scanning this, and I don't see the increase that they've assumed. Because they are, because it's someone in their best interest for this project to proceed, if they could get revenues from this, I would expect that is on the high side when they look at the projected hydro increases. But it's not jumping out again. I know it was in here somewhere, but I had a feeling it was based on previous...
And this Ontario Hydro seems to just have a open rules to jump at just about anything. And I've changed just about everything in our house to LED, and yet my hydro is still higher. And now my delivery charges are surpassing the amount of hydro I use. So at this point, it's starting to look like $30,000 to $40,000 to go off the grid is looking real inviting. Plus, it works all the time. Instead of going off for days and a... So, I don't know, I would, myself, I would vote in favor of going ahead with this. I think payback's going to be a lot sooner.
It's 43 grand.
And we'll put it to the vote. Any other questions? So call a question, all those in favor. Okay, and a four votes, Carrie's. And move by Counselor Cooper, seconded by Counselor Douglas. It resolve that committee of the whole does now adjourn at 12:07 PM until Tuesday, August 15, 2017, at 9:00 AM, for the call of the chair. All those in favor, and that one carries. And there's a good chance it may be on the Monday also. We'll work towards that. Budget? Somebody else may be chairing. I'm going to read down...